Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the role, please.
Councilmember Gellerlos.
Present.
Merrigan.
Present.
Norfolk.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwach.
Present.
And Merriman.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, Councilmember Tim Steenstra will be giving the invocation. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this place, this time to gather. We thank you for our city and citizens, the people who work here, and for this governing board, and we ask a blessing in our meeting tonight. We thank you for the beauty of the fall season. We thank you for this time when we can vote and express our choices in leadership, and we thank you for a good start here in our city with the voting process, and we pray for a peaceful process and acceptance of choices that are made. We ask, we thank you for the people who are here in attendance, and we pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim, so much. Appreciate that. Tonight, you have before you, council, the agendas or motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Support? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from a meeting I was not at. Thank you, JR, for leading that meeting, October 14. You've had a chance to look at those minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Or any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out? Otherwise, motion to approve?
So move.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other comments, questions? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Then we have presentation of bills. Griffin, another significant amount tonight. It's only gone two weeks since the last meeting.
Yes, and stuff's happening.
That's good.
Absolutely.
All right.
So I'll highlight a few, if you all don't mind. First, just will point out an invoice in the amount of almost $94,000 to the City of Walker. This is one of our payments for IT contractual services. We work with IT, or excuse me, with City Walker's IT department. They do a fantastic job for us, so that's just one of our regular payments to them. Moving down into an invoice in the amount of almost $207,000 to Dyke House Construction. This is another one of the progress payments for the fire station. We are this close to being done. We've got a relatively short punch list of items. We're actually going to be doing a walkthrough later this week with the contractor and the engineer involved in that project, so we're very close to being done there. Moving on to an invoice in the amount of just shy of $199,000 from Franklin Horder Company. This is progress on the clean water plant aeration blower project and the raw sewage pump replacement. There is also a relatively large more in Brujink invoice in the amount of about $61,000. This is associated with the progress on those two projects as well as the 36th Street Water Main and Reconstruct project. And the last one I have is contribution to Senior Neighbors. This is our quarterly contribution in the amount of $17,681. Really pointing this one out only because I had the opportunity to have coffee with their new president last week, so had kind of my first chance to learn a little bit more about what they do in our community, and then found it a little coincidental that our quarterly payment was on this list, so just thought I would highlight that as well. Happy to answer any questions about the rest of the invoices, but nothing else to note.
Okay. Any questions for Griffin or Jane on any of the bills tonight? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $974,749.64?
So move.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other final questions, comments? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Merrigan.
Yes.
Norfolk.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwach.
Yes.
Gellerlos.
Yes.
And Merriman.
Yes. Well, before we open it up to public comment, we have a couple presentations, a couple fun things tonight. Chief May, do you want to come up with the first presentation? That's Fire Department Lieutenant, that's three of them this evening.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. It's good to be here with something other than a change order.
Right. We appreciate that.
This was some good change that was in order, but... But council might remember probably two and a half years ago in the budget talks, I kind of started to worm you up to the idea that the fire department's had too much growth and were too busy not to have 24/7 supervision on staff. And we planned on doing this next year, but Lieutenant Veldman's resignation earlier this year kind of paved the way to do this early. So I'm happy to introduce tonight, guys are back there somewhere, you can come up and join me. We've got Tom Blake, who's got 23 years total with the department, 12 full-time. Tom Datema, 34 years total, 24 of which are full-time. And Kevin McNutt, 27 years total, 25 of which are full-time. So these guys were interviewed about a month ago by a panel that helped me out that consisted of Griffin, Chief Englem, and Emily, our HR assistant, and they were chosen to fill these roles. They've hit the ground running. We've caught up on a lot of things already. It's only been three weeks, and I asked them to please keep their remarks under five minutes, so they could be okay.
We defer.
So that's all I've got, but congratulations, guys.
Yeah, congratulations.
Well, one of them actually does want to say a couple words, so I'll get out of the way.
Just real quick, I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of Lieutenant Blake and Lieutenant McNutt, and the chief was actually saying the years of service that we had. I was just going to tell you that we bring 75 years of combined service to you guys, and we hope to continue that for many more years and give you guys lots of great service. I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the entire fire department. I want to thank Chief May also for the continued support. We got three new pieces of equipment that are actually fantastic pieces of equipment, and appreciate the support for every single one of those. I was here when we had equipment that started on fire when we were at fires, that it was so old. And then we got new equipment that was in the 1990s that was actually fantastic back then, too, and it brought us through to today. And the continued support of the fire department, it really means a lot to myself and my colleagues, and I'm sure the fire chiefs. So I just wanted to thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation is from the Kent District Library, which is appropriate that we're in the library tonight because of election that's going on at City Hall. So I don't know who's going to be doing that. You're doing the presentation.
I will start.
Great.
So I'm kind of thrown off by equipment from the 90s being good then and not anymore. I wonder what that makes me, but kind of sobering. But no, a great night. This is fun doing this in the library. We've got, you know, leaves outside on the trees, on the ground that some of us had to clean up, cookies here, breakout of all different types of people. We've got storytime with the kids next door. I mean, another great Granville night, right? So my name's Pete Dykes. I'm your representative on the Kent District Library Board, also a resident just a block or two away. And, you know, we've had a great year. I actually don't usually come up here with notes, but my mind doesn't hold everything here. We had a number of awards I thought I'd share with you guys this year. First was, you know, the last year, we, Kent District Library has awarded the Jerry Klein Community Impact Prize. This was this time last year. This is one library per year, recognizes libraries that help their communities thrive. We were also recently awarded the Institute of Museum and Library Services. This is a national award. It's the highest national award for museums and libraries, and the Kent District Library was the only one in Michigan that was awarded that. And these institutions are chosen for change that touches the lives of individuals and again helps their communities thrive. And we were also awarded in October of this year, so just a few weeks ago, the Michigan Library Association Intellectual Freedom Award, and this is for protecting the right to read, opposing censorship, and educating the community on First Amendment rights. So it's, you know, it goes to show, you know, the library again is about books, but it's about this right here, too. It's about community. And if there's one thing that, you know, Granville seems to do really well, it's community with our festivals and, you know, everything else, the tree plantings, but library's an important part of that as well. So I won't worry anything else for me. I feel a little inferior asking Lance to come up. He's our director, but he was also, and I wrote in my notes here, just named to the Cranes GR200, the most influential people, so a little bit more important than I am here, but thank you again.
Thank you for serving on the board. Appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Lance, welcome.
Yeah, it's good to see you. It's been a little bit.
It has.
A little croaky. Hi, everybody. My name's Lance Warner. I'm the executive director of the Kent District Library, and I want to thank you all for support of this great facility, and this expansion's just been a godsend. I know it's something you worked hard on for a really long time, and we're visionary in it, and it's really delivering to the community, so hats off to you. And I want to thank you for your service, too. Thankfully during campaign years, that's not always easy, but I respect it, and it's, we're all doing the work, public service, that's what it's all about. And that's why I show up every day, too. So I'm just going to run through some quick stats for you. The Kent District Library continues to be successful. We're on number 49th in the world on ebook circulation, considers eight billion people in the world. We're number 49, so maybe next year we'll be number in the top 30. I don't know. Anyway, it's good to have goals in that it's really evidence to me about the community's sort of love of literature and the value around reading in families and how important that is to familial success. And we had a 46% increase in in-person program attendance. We had almost 200,000 people spanning all ages across the county at our programs. And we had a 15% increase in visits to the library, the 2.3 million total in-person visits. We are, in many metrics, surpassing our pre-COVID numbers, and some we're still catching up. It takes time. During that time, we were, you know, had to teach everybody to visit us remotely, and now we're trying to teach everybody to come on back. I think the stat that I'm most proud of, though, is that we gave out over 20,000 meals to hungry kids this summer to deal with summer food insecurity. We do that in partnership with Feeding America, and that's important. And I was so, so proud to be able to do that when we had to close and the world closed down for COVID, and it wasn't summer food insecurity, it was just food insecurity. And continue to do the work. It's a blessing to have purpose, and it's always a pleasure to be here with you guys. I'm sorry I spent a minute, but I made it. I'm a little croaky. It's not contagious, in case you wonder. But anyway, I'll turn over to Josh, you as the true superstar of the show. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, Josh. What a rush. Yeah. Well, it's good to see everybody. I see many of you with regularity, but it's nice to see you all here in the library tonight. Lance gets to talk about KDL as a whole. I like to bring it home and just tell you a little bit about how we fit into that and give you a couple of local stories and things. Stats-wise, it's kind of weird being here three quarters of the way through the year talking about our 2023 stats as we're nearing closing our '24 stats, but that little piece of Granville, our circulation here last year was just under 370,000, which was third of all of our 20 branches within KDL. Give you some context in our system, which was a 5% increase on the last year, or sorry, it was 467,000. We're nearing 370 already this year, so we're going to go up again. We'll see exactly where that lands. Visitor count, we were 194,000 last year. We're already at 176,000 this year. So even though we went up 60 or 22% last year, we're going, going to go up again. So people here in Granville love us, which is a good thing. The thing I was most proud of, we really have added a lot of programs and a lot of storytimes and things in the last year or two. Last year, we had 20,423 people come in for programs and events throughout the year. That was 117% increase on the year before. At this point, as of end of September, we're already at about 22,000, so people are coming to learn to read and to have some entertainment and just to gather, which is really what the building is all about, is just gathering and community space. So much of this growth comes from a number of things. I think a big part of it is some services that people really like, being at programs, using our study rooms if you have time to walk around. One of the big things in the building plan was having more than the two study rooms. I believe we have about 10 now, and they're full most of the day, every day. The children's area, room rentals, obviously we're in here tonight, and storytime's over there tomorrow night. I think this half has a men's Bible study going on, and that half has a condo association meeting or annual meeting going on, so every night there's something in one of these three rooms. And free printing is another big one that it really brings people in. It's a nice service that we started during COVID and has been popular. But I think one of the real reasons that this branch does so well throughout KDL is the great partnership that we have. We have an unusual partnership where I'm thankful to be included as basically a department head for meetings and for keeping things going throughout the city, and then we partner so well with both the city and the DDA when it comes to programming and activities, whether that's fundraising and dreaming up and creating a music garden outside, or being a part of events like Art and Chocolate Walk, which brings so many people in every year, or Christmas at the Commons, which will have a craft sale for kids inside while the adult ones happen outside this year, so. I'll leave you with that. I just want to leave you with two or three little stories because it's always nice to hear individual things going on here. So three of them for you. Megan mentioned that a couple of weeks ago, she had been talking to two of our unhomed patrons, David and Mark, out in the lobby and just had a conversation with them, got to know their names. The next day, David came in and she remembered his name and just smiled and said, "Hey, David." And he stopped in his tracks, looked at her, and said, "That's weird hearing my name. No one ever says my name." And it just made his day to have somebody actually remember who he is and acknowledge him. Another one, Maria had told me that a couple of months ago, she was doing a tech tutoring with a man, and during that tech tutoring appointment, he told her that his first date with his wife was here in this library. And about a month later, he came back in to introduce her to his wife, but also to print out some job papers because he had just gotten a new job, and the tech tutoring was he was here working on his resume and learning how to do that with Maria. And then finally, I was really appreciative of this. We have, we partner with the senior center and offer Tai Chi for seniors here in this space every, I believe it's Tuesdays and Thursdays. And recently, the guy, Matt Kilroy, who leads that, stopped in and came up to me. I happened to be working the desk. He said, "Oh, great, you're here. I need to talk to you." And I kind of had a moment of, that's never a good thing when somebody notices the manager and wants to talk to you. And he said, "Now, I want to tell you something, but you need to promise that you're going to say yes." And I was like, "That's not a great sign either." But I said, "I'll see what I can do." And he proceeded to tell me that he's been teaching Tai Chi for seniors for seven to 10 years, I think he said, does it in all different places, and this is by far his favorite, both the facility, the staff, the partnership with Senior Neighbors, everything about it. He just really appreciated, and he wanted me to say yes to saying that he could bring in pizza for staff for lunch just to celebrate them and all they do. So this is just what the library means to the community, and I appreciate all of your support for the building and helping make that happen, so. That's about all we got for you, unless any of you have questions for one of the three of us.
Yeah. The study rooms you referenced, what is the maximum capacity of your largest study room here?
There are, of the regular study rooms, there are two that I think fit six around the table, and then the rest of them, with one exception, fit three or four.
Is the Wyoming Library the only one system that has study rooms that will hold eight or more?
Uh, might be. We do have...
I mean, we have a lot of things going on now, so...
Yeah, I was going to say, separate from the regular study rooms that are in like the library proper, there's the Babcock Cook Conference Room right there, which is usable. We don't have it as part of the study room service, but you can reserve it like you've got these rooms, and that fits 10, 12 people around the table.
Is that a reserved room or first come, first served?
So if it's not reserved, it's first come, first served, but otherwise you could reserve it the same way you would this space with a form. Yeah, so. But most of the time, it's open for general use.
Paul, I think our closed session eventually is going to be in that conference room, so I haven't been in there, but maybe I will, so.
Yeah, I can picture it, but I've been in there.
So people use that. I know Josh and his battle teams use it.
Have you used it for years for battle to get to practice with some high school players?
So I don't know if we reserved it tonight, but we would like...
I did, I did reserve it, yes. Yeah, we're on it, yeah. Anyone else? All right, well, I know you've got a lot to do, so I'll let you get to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So it is time for public comments, so if anybody's here and would like to address the council, just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about this evening. Welcome.
Hi there. So good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Carrie Hamrick. I am a former city commissioner at East Grand Rapids, and now I am a current Michigan Healthy Climate Corps member. And City Manager Griffin, would you like me to hand these off to you so you can pass them out to the council members for reference? And then it will be helpful when I talk about this, so we know what's happening. Thank you. So just to give you a quick summary of what I'm doing now, because I know I only have a short time. I am a Michigan Healthy Climate Corps member now, and I'm working with an organization called Clean Fuels Michigan, and they are a trade association with about 30 members. And we, what we do is we work to accelerate clean fuels policies at the state level, so we work directly with legislators on behalf of our members. And I work as their Transportation Resources Coordinator, and what that means is I connect communities with the wealth of funding, federal and state funding opportunities for clean transportation projects. And we basically help to bring those things to fruition. So I've been working across the state, reaching out and doing a lot of community engagement and things of that nature to help kind of let people know about what funding is available to them to bring things to fruition, so. I provided you with a handout that's kind of a reference for kind of outlining a few of the ways that you can bring, that your city can bring and participate in the effort to reach the state's climate goals. First, there's a wide array of funding resources available to transition city fleets to EVs. Second, residents have several utility rebate options to purchase either used or a new EV or install EV infrastructure in their home. One of the things that we've been encouraging municipalities to do is to communicate this to their residents, because a lot of them don't even know that utility rebates exist for this, and you can do that by way of your website, your Facebook page, or your newsletters. And third, municipalities can install EV charging stations to provide to their community members. You may already have this existing in your community, but I know in East Grand Rapids, we did this within Gaslight Village, our business district, which has been very successful for the community, is seen as a big amenity. And not only residents, but patrons who've come to, you know, use our business district and eat at the restaurants and come to the shops, know that they can charge their vehicles within the business district, so it's been very successful that way. And I, from what I gather, we're going to be getting more of them, so I'm happy about that. To learn more about the funding resources we have, you can scan that QR code that's on that handout, and that will bring you to the Funding Hub that my colleagues and I put together that lives on our website, and it will literally give you an entire table of links that you can access, all the funding resources that are available, grant funding, utility resources, and tax credits for businesses, municipalities, and residents to tap into. And that's pretty much it, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. I've been reaching out to communities all over the state, doing a lot of engagement, and I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, you can see that my card's attached, and you can reach out, so thank you.
Great, thanks for coming tonight. I've got a quick question for you.
Sure.
So the utility rebates for residents, yeah, I didn't know there was such a thing.
Yeah.
Do you ever come and talk to groups, or is this so self-explanatory? We could give a link and you can, people can...
There's, if you go to that QR code, the link to Consumers Energy is on there, and it will tell you all the rebates are available. It's for, primarily for residents, but also for businesses, too. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Mike, good to see you.
Hi, Mike Cobb, 336240th. Just want to thank each and every one of you for serving again, also the department heads, and Randy, and extra shout-out to Marcy and her group for everything she's doing. And thank you so much for the lead drop-off. It is such a huge blessing in the community. Look at those piles in there and how many people are showing up, and it's great, so appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else here like to address the council? See, we've got some visitors. Would you like to share with us?
We're earning our democracy badge.
That's great. This is a good time to do that. Thank you for coming. Last call, public comment? Jan?
I'd like to thank the board, or the council, I should say, for all the support you've given to the Friends of the Library and for the support you've given to the library and this community and its entirety. So we truly appreciate your help and the job you do. You help make Granville a wonderful, wonderful place.
Well, thank you for all the thousands of volunteer hours that you've put in, helping the library.
Me and a whole lot of others.
Yeah, but thank you. Anybody else? Okay, if not, next item is the consent agenda. We have some reports, the fire and investment report for all of September. We also have some minutes from the Historical Commission and the Park and Recreation Board in September, as well as the Library Board and the Downtown Development Authority minutes from earlier this month. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
And support. Anything anybody wants to talk about in particular? They're always good, interesting reports, so thank you for everybody who else putting together. We have motion and support. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Griffin, your turn. City managers report.
Awesome. Well, thank you, everyone. I'll start just by saying how much I appreciate all of you taking the time to come to the special joint meeting prior to our regular meeting today. I know that's a lot of extra time for everyone, but I feel very good about how that turned out, so just thank you all for doing that. When it comes to some proposed actions, or some requested action on tonight's agenda, I'm going to start with the 2025 and 2026 fireworks contracts. So the memo in the packet details these requests, but I guess I'll break them into two pieces. Piece one is, there is a request to enter into a contract with Pyrotechnico, who is the city's fireworks contract vendor. They've done the fireworks shows for the last couple of years at the Fourth of July festivities due to the semi-quinsentennial, I hope I said that right, that will take place on July 4th, 2026, which also happens to be on a Saturday. It is being strongly recommended that communities who are interested in having fireworks displays reserve a vendor and reserve a date now because of the extra anticipated demand coming that year. So what we have before you is a contract with consistent terms for the July 4th, 2026 fireworks show, as well as while we were preparing that contract, the city attorney found some modifications that he would suggest to the existing 2025 contract with the same company. So if there are questions about those in more detail, I'm sure the city attorney would be happy to discuss those, but what we're looking for is a motion to approve a contract with Pyrotechnico for fireworks in 2026, as well as to approve modifications to an existing contract for 2025. We have consent from Pyrotechnico on both of those contracts already.
And David, the modifications are in the city's favor, right?
Correct, yeah. Modifications are in the city's favor, dealt with some indemnities that were requested by the fireworks provider, and as the council knows, it's obviously not good to provide indemnities, and it's questionable whether a municipality really even can provide an indemnity, so we made some changes there. And then, as the city manager said, we noticed some of the smart print was the same in the prior year's contract, which of course hasn't occurred yet, the event hasn't occurred yet, so it's for the 25th. yet, so it's for the 25 contracts. We're recommending approval of the 26 contract and also a modification of the already signed 25 contract to make the same changes in each.
We can do those both together in one motion? So is there a motion to enter into the modification to the existing fireworks contract and also new contract for 2026, 250 year anniversary of our country with Pyrotechnico's fireworks program, right?
Sort of.
And support. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Norco?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Yoderlos?
Yes.
Marygus?
Yes.
Next, we'll go ahead. The next request we have is to follow up on the purchase order request regarding some HVAC equipment that was originally discussed, that was originally discussed at the last meeting. So at that time, there were some questions brought up about competitive pricing for that equipment. So since that date, the DPW team reached out to a number of other qualified commercial contractors to attempt to obtain competitive quotes. The memo included in your packet highlights the summary of those responses. Unfortunately, the lack of responses or the lack of actual quotes from these specialty contractors is becoming more and more common, but nevertheless, we wanted to demonstrate to you all the due diligence that was undertaken since that last meeting. So just to summarize briefly, the responses, if we got a response, really either came in the form of the vendor not being interested in the project at this time, or more commonly, they may be interested, but they're not even going to be able to quote us for a period of anywhere from three, four, five, six months. And if we are interested in completing this project on the original timeline, we are going to need to move forward prior to that. But with, with that outcome, and I kind of recognize how unsatisfying that is, wanted to bring an update before you all and then really propose two options. Option one would be, you know, if the city council is comfortable with the due diligence taken to obtain competitive quotes, it would be recommended to move forward with quality air. Should the city council want to move forward with quality air, there are some modifications to the originally proposed contract from that vendor that are being recommended by the city attorney. We would just like to see that noted in the motion so we can make sure that those changes are made before any signatures are executed. Alternatively, if the city council would prefer more time spent to obtain competitive quotes, we are happy to do that as well with the understanding of that will probably delay the project for this year. We can, we can make that happen. It's at the end of the day, at the discretion of the city council, but those are the two options we have right now with, with the information we have. I'm happy to do it. I can have to answer any questions.
Questions or comments for Griffin?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that I know that the imposition of Chris's request has added more work onto Charlie and to you, Griffin, but I just want to say that I greatly appreciate taking the time to do this. It did not yield any change, but it does ensure good stewardship of tax dollars and so I'm grateful for going the next step with this and at least putting it out there and seeing what kind of response we would get. But I have no objections moving forward with this, with the attorneys' modifications.
Sounds like a motion to me.
Sure.
Because we weren't able to get it, meaning we should do it in the best interest. Okay. Best interest of the city, best interest. Yeah. Wow. Five months to get a quote? That's a long time. People are busy.
They are, and you know, I'll emphasize again, you know, some of the questions that, again, are all the right questions to ask for the very purpose you mentioned of just ensuring we're, we're being good stewards of the public resources for which we're responsible for. You know, we did also confirm that a, a commercial level HVAC contractor was going to be necessary for the project. The other option that, you know, I think my mind originally went to was, okay, well, why don't I just call the heating and cooling guy that I would, I would call to use at my house? And, you know, it was determined by people much smarter than me when it comes to this level of, of project, that a commercial level contractor was most appropriate. Those specialty contractors are just really difficult to get right now, but I will also emphasize for you all that the necessity and the value of spending the extra time to go after these competitive quotes was reemphasized with our leadership team since the last meeting as well. So if there are ever any other questions or concerns about those moving forward, please don't hesitate to bring those up. We are responsible and happy to do what we need to do to make sure we're getting competitive quotes in the appropriate situations.
Appreciate that. So the total amount of, there's, there's the modification, but then the purchase order was approximately $110,913. We have a motion and we have support in the best interest of the city. Any other comments or questions? If not, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Yoderlos?
Yes.
Marygus?
Yes.
Norco?
Yes.
And Marymax?
Yes.
Anything else?
Just a few miscellaneous informational pieces I want to highlight for the group. First, the, the DDA will be hosting a fantastic Christmas at the Commons event again this year on December 7th. They have asked if there are city council members interested in participating in the tree lighting ceremony like in the past. So if all of you don't mind putting that on your radar and if that's something you are around and interested in, please let me know so I can pass that on to Teresa and the DDA. I would like to throw out to our team and to the first responders who work for the city of Granville and as well as who partner with the city of Granville, that I learned today is National First Responders Day. So we're very appreciative of all the people on our team, fire department, police department and the like, for all, all the work they do for us. Put a couple other notes in the packet that I just want to highlight. The first one being on our annual wholesale customer meeting with the city of Wyoming. This will more than likely be a topic in a conversation we're going to need to discuss more, but I just wanted to make sure I put this all on your radar kind of as soon as I had the information. So the city of Wyoming, who all of you know is who the city of Granville receives its water from, has some significant upgrades planned for their water system over the upcoming two decades totaling over half of, or excuse me, half a billion dollars. That is a good thing in the sense of any of our water systems are in need of upgrades and it's going to ensure we have a sustainable supply of, of safe water here for our community, but that's not going to come without costs and we are more than likely going to see some significant increases in our wholesale water rates over the upcoming years, which in effect will likely need to lead to some increases in our retail water rates. So that's something that I want to make sure we're, we're starting to have on everyone's radar so that we can have some more informed discussions about that as we move forward. At this time, I did include some of the information provided to us at that meeting for you all and I'll just throw out, I'm happy to have discussions either individually or as a group as we move forward and start to understand what that's going to mean for us. And then lastly, on a more positive note, the Halloween holiday is, is this week and the city of Granville recommends trick or treating hours from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on Thursday, October 31st. The police department will also be hosting a badges and boo trick or treating event on that same day from 5:30 to 7:30 at the police station, so at the, at the municipal complex on Wilson Avenue. And I learned there will be special guest appearances by Buckets and McGruff the Crime Dog. So it sounds like a great opportunity for some of the families in town to enjoy that. Whether or not you're going to participate in the event hosted by the police department or some other type of trick or treating, please be safe out there and enjoy the holiday here in Granville. That's all the comments I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Griffin? If not, before we adjourn to an executive session for the purpose of discussing a tax appeal, we'll do, and that is Walmart stores, that's the matter, we'll do council member comments before that adjournment. So Randy, let's start with you tonight.
Not a lot. I just wanted to say, I thought it was a very good and productive meeting that we had earlier with the DDA. And it's probably something we should be aware of, to do a little more to shoot for every couple of years or every so often to do that. I thought it was just a, it was a good meeting to have and everybody can, everybody shared their thoughts and were all on the same page and sort of thing. So I look forward to do that again and other than that, I don't think there's anything else. Say that and we can do the order, Jan. Thank you.
Josh?
Yeah, I agree with that as well. I just want to say, congratulations to Tom, Tom and Kevin. It's kind of adding up the number of years as they were being introduced. It's quite impressive, over 75 years of service. So some really dedicated guys there and just want to say, you know, congratulations on the promotion and appreciate all their service over the years. It's, it's amazing. Great guys. I wanted to mention the Park and Rec Board is currently, it's in the minutes, but just for public information. Park and Rec Board is currently seeking public comment, a revision to the master plan for parks and recreation for the city of Granville. And that survey will be open until the 31st, till the end of the month. You can get to it either from the city's Facebook page or it's right on the front page of the city website, www.cityofgranville.com. It pops right up on there and you can either scan the QR code or click on the pop-up and get to the survey, but would like to get, you know, as much public input as possible about any amenities, any new ideas, anything for the parks and recreation that you'd like to see. There are a few suggestions there for you to kind of vote up or down, but then there's also spaces for you to write in things. So we see lots of kids here and lots of people here in the audience, so please take a few minutes. It's a very short survey. It kind of goes through each park individually and asks you for some feedback on each of them. It's kind of a mini-update for our master plan, but it's something that we're required to do every five years to make sure that we're current with our, our list of projects and our wish list. And it also makes us eligible for grant funding, should that be available. And we've been able to take advantage of some really good financing opportunities between the ARPA funds and some other MDNR grants over the last couple of years. So we'd like to continue that momentum and continue to improve our parks and public spaces. So please take a few minutes to fill that out, everybody here. Appreciate the input. Thanks.
Justin?
All right, yeah, just a few things. I, like Randy, was very appreciative of the opportunity to have the DDA meeting. I thought it was very productive, very informative and puts us on a good path of greater collaboration and transparency between the two groups to help ensure that moving forward, we're all aligned and working for the same thing. So thank you to Griffin and to Teresa and all those who put time into making that productive today. I also wanted to say it was just, this was a great meeting, full of a lot of celebration. So I'm very thankful for the library and all of the information we received from our representative on the board and from Lance and from Josh and just a great reminder of how blessed we are in the city of Granville to have this space and the impact that it has on people. And then the promotion of the lieutenants, there was just a lot to celebrate tonight. And we are in, in election season, so like the mayor said, I think it's very appropriate that we have some younger guests here earning your democracy badge. Hopefully something you noticed in tonight's presentation was that there is no Republican or Democrat or anything like that up here. This is just members of the community working together to try and address issues that we all have to figure out together and navigate together. And so for you and for all people, it's just a great reminder of what can happen at the local level. It's here in the community where we're not calling each other names and engaging in those kinds of things. This is just where the people's work actually takes place and very, very productive. So it's an honor to serve on this council. And one final point on that note, I engaged early voting this week, which was just awesome. I did not have very long line, so very appreciative of all of the poll workers and the clerk and the clerk's office. And while I was in the very short line I was in, there was a resident who had some concerns about the validity of some of the election practices that were happening. And Marcy came out and addressed those concerns in a very calm way and was able to assure that resident that the vote would indeed count. So we live in an era, unfortunately, of increased skepticism around our voting practices, but here in Granville, we're very fortunate to have you and the work that you and all of the volunteers and poll workers do. So thank you all very much for that. Sorry for the long comments tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't really have anything new to add, but I will say, I appreciated the time spent with the DDA too and probably Teresa and Griffin more, more than less is probably a good thing to do. And I look forward to January when we have Al Vandenberg here, helping lead us through some strategic planning as well. And girls, it's great to have you here. One thing to really take note of, we tend to agree on a lot of things and our meetings are very efficient. Less than an hour, okay? That's it.
Yeah, they chose a good meeting to go to for democracy badges to be a good council and a good particular short agenda, so well done, whoever made the choice there. I have nothing else to add to what's been said, that a lot's been said, I agree with all of it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for all the guests who came. I really didn't expect this many people here in this special space. Really grateful for this space, that we can have this meeting here. In my time on the council, I've only ever met at the council chambers, on Zoom at Wedgewood once?
Yeah.
And then here. So this is a special opportunity and I'm glad, I'm actually grateful that a lot of people did show up. This is, this was special and it's a unique space and we're grateful for this awesome space, so happy to be here, happy that everyone else is here. Thank you.
I just got actually a question for our guests in the front row. So do you know how old you need to be to vote?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, right. Do you know how old you have to be to be on the city council or be the mayor?
That was one question that they, we did not know the answer to.
Okay, same thing, eighteen. So are you about halfway there or a little more than that?
I'm fifteen.
You're very close, so in three years, three years, you know how old you have to be to be the mayor? Eighteen? So in three years, you could vote and you could be on the city council, be the mayor. You couldn't be president of the United States, you got to be 35. So thanks for being here tonight, really appreciate that. All right, is there a motion to adjourn to a closed session for the purpose of discussing the Walmart pending tax?
So. Support.
Motion, support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Yoderlos?
Yes.
Marygus?
Yes.
Norco?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Marymax?[1797.25]